This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 22nd, 2022 Tenino City Council Work Session. I believe all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Lawton. Let me double check here. Councilmember Lawton will not be joining us tonight. He's feeling ill. So he called and talked to him about that. So on the consent calendar, if we could add that. Tonight, the first item of discussion on the work session is playground prep update from Public Works Director Troy Cannon. So as you all know, we were awarded $515,000 for playground replacement. That was in the Capitol budget that was just passed a few weeks, like, well, two weeks ago. It's very exciting. This has been an ongoing effort for us. We lost our playground in a windstorm less than a year ago, but we've been working hard to come up with a replacement plan that will ensure that placement into a new playground is more appropriate. And we wanted to really go for it and not just repair what we had. We want to completely replace it and do things better. We'd already made some investments in a pump track that we were looking at. So with this new award of funds, we're trying to take a, we took a step back. We met with some of the playground equipment folks and we're going to take a more global approach. And Troy's going to talk to you about three different phases that we're going to be rolling out. We're going to need some additional assistance from the council. So we'll be making a request tonight for some funds from the pool of ARPA money that we received last year and this year. But I'll let Troy kind of take over and talk about where we're at and what we're doing.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the first phase, what we really want to do is move the old toys and move that section of stuff up by the old park. There used to be an old set of toys up there, if you guys remember, right across from Park Street. It's been quite a few years now that we took down, oh, I'm going to say eight years ago or something, but.
Go ahead, Troy.
What's that?
Go ahead, rub it in that I'm old.
I'm right with you. So that's what we're thinking about doing with the old toys and the old swings and stuff like that. So kids can still use it up there. And of course, you know, the company I've contacted is going to come in and give us the number for that and actually use all the parts that we got to fix it to and make it safe and sound and whatnot. We're going to put a curb around the whole park thing so we keep all the wood chips inside of it too. And I think that's a great spot for it up there. And then the second phase would be asphalt, prep for asphalt, prep for our dome toys, swings, workout stuff. That would go from the parking lot, if you're facing the parking lot, looking at the new park bathroom, we call it. It would be everything through that area where the old park or old toys were. And so the whole area would be kind of graded and redone and put some gravel down. And then we could put the toys in, wood chips, asphalt. That would be second phase. The third phase would be the pump track being installed kind of around that whole part, the whole toy assembly stuff and the workout stuff and the swings. And so I think it would be just better access for kids also to get, instead of going all the way in the back. But that's the idea right now that we have. Other than that, I mean, there's going to be some work that Public Works has to do, which is fine. We're all happy and we're willing to do that. Especially to get the toys done.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything, Wayne?
Yeah, well, no, no, great job. So we've got the current toys that are broken. We have all the parts to replacement, to replace what was broken and basically build them anew. We want to build it, we want to build it back, but we want to rebuild it over in the old park section by Parkside to replace those toys that were taken out about 10 years ago. We want to get those out of the section that they're in now. And we're going to, we would like, with the council's assistance, hopefully tonight, we would like approval for $150,000 from the ARPA funds, which we got about $500,000 from. And we spent, we bought, we paid $100,000 into the pump track and we paid for some of the parking lot. So there's some left. What we'd like is authorization to spend up to $150,000 of that to do prep work. That would allow us to get the ground ready. That would allow us to put some asphalt in. It would include an asphalt track around the circumference of the park. And it would include an asphalt pad in the portion of the park that would become the pump track and new playground. And it would also allow us to like pre-purchase the initial centerpiece for the new playground. The company that we're buying the equipment from, they have this, this big rope dome explorer piece that is in Texas. The company they use is in Sweden. It typically takes about a year to get the equipment. But there's a, there's a piece that we want that is sitting in Texas in their warehouse. If we reserve it now, we can have the first portion of our playground up in May. So then we would have our new playground started, our old playground moved. And then come fall, we would be ready to receive the rest of the playground equipment, which would include the new pump track, which is, we're going to go bigger and better. We're going to do a permanent pump track in the park instead of the modular pump track where we would be kind of moving it around town. Thoughts?
No, I just can't visualize it. I know it's been something that we've been looking at for quite some time. The money's there. We're not tapping into the citizens' funds anymore. It's money that we've given out years ago, finally got some back. So that's a good thing. I just have a hard time visualizing stuff, but I'm not, I'm not worried about that part.
Yeah, and we will have plans forthcoming. I can certainly kind of, if you go to highwire.com, if you're on your computer, Highwire Playground, on their website, the best example of the dome play structure, you would go to Highwire, then you go to Featured Projects, Honolulu Zoo, they have one of these explorer domes, and it's a, it's a large, it's a large structure with cables and ropes. And it's kind of, it's kind of a new, like a different style of playground that is built more on like climbing and exploration. The dome itself fits around 52 children. And off of the dome, there would be multiple play features off of it. So there'd be like rope courses off of it. There'd be slides off of it. There would be a bank of swings. So this is just the centerpiece to a larger kind of theme play area. We also want to include some, you know, some stone themes within the area. And then surrounding this whole play system would be a pump track. So you would, you know, you would have kids that are up high in these, you know, this is like 20 feet in the air. There's kids that are up high at the top of this thing, playing around in the net. They can look down on the other children that are playing on the pump track. And then surrounding that area, you have things that are usable for adults, like elliptical bikes. And that's that, at least that's the vision that will be forthcoming. We're just trying to move quickly on this stuff. Go ahead, Jen.
Sorry, I have to shame in. Can we note that we're still going to have banks of swings and, you know, traditional slides? But this is also going to be an all-inclusive playground that will be ADA accessible as well.
Yeah.
Very important.
Slide, slide is cool.
Slides are cool. Swings are cool.
Okay, yeah.
I think the dome, I think the dome is my favorite part at this point.
It's really, really.
The pump track, the dome, yeah, that is, that's really exciting.
Yeah.
I love it.
And the company's really excited about this too. So, you know, we've already been working with them. They, you know, they're, the pump track company is kind of new. We're going away from the portable one to a permanent one that's, it's got a steel structure under it. And we'd be one of the first in the country that's using this, this build in this company. And we'd be one of the first in the country that has the pump tracks surrounding the playground. So it, it all is kind of really tied nicely in and, you know, he's, you know, kind of the dome matches the hillside behind it. And with this playground, with our renovations to the quarry pool, the next thing we're really going to need to think about is improving our campgrounds. Because I think with all these things, we'll have, we'll have a lot of people that will want to come and camp for the summer and spend their weekends and weeks in the park. So the next thing we may need to talk about is expanding our camping area to have camp slips that have power, water, sewer, and then, you know, looking at what, what actual other campgrounds charge. So, you know, now it's kind of a passive thing where it's $8 a day and people come in, they, and they camp in a primitive fashion. But I think with these improvements, we'll have people that want to be guests in our park all summer long.
Years ago, Wayne, we were talking about what you're saying now. One of the things that you did mention here was also running cable. Comcast at that time said that they'd be happy to drop all the line in as long as we ran the, ran the ditches for them. They don't need to be real deep.
What do you mean cable? So when I said cables, that's like the, the style of campground. Are you talking about into the camp or the style of playground? Are you talking about into the campground?
Yeah, to the, to each site.
Okay.
So that, so, because a lot of people like having TV. If you look at some of the night, the bigger camps, campers that are out there, they've got their own satellite and that type of setup, which our park is not conducive to because of all the trees.
Wi-Fi.
Well, do we have, we don't have Wi-Fi out there, but.
There's still service, but, but that might be the thing to look at is having Wi-Fi available in the campground. But you're right, those, all those amenities are going to make it much more appealing to the campground. But I really think that we're on the, on the cusp of it, you know, being a legit destination. Something that I imagine our new park specialist will be talking to you guys more and more about. So it's not necessarily on the agenda, but it is in the budget under revenue for 2021 and 2022 ARPA funds. If the council so wishes, they could place under Old Business on the Agenda, authorizing the expense of $150,000 from municipal capital improvement for Phase 1 site prep of the new park and park playground. Anything else on that?
A comment got missed on the agenda.
This is all moving kind of quick, the, you know, exactly what we would need to do it. We just got some, you know, kind of informal bids from different professionals just late last night. And today we've been working on a few other things. So, I mean, it's on the work session, but I wasn't confident we'd be able to talk about it or move on it on the agenda. So you can do it or you can put it off to the next meeting. Our hope is that we can start mid-April on the site prep. So, you know, that just kind of backing out from mid-April, it puts us up to like right now to actually put some kind of bid package out to hire. We would do, we'd be doing all our own ground prep. Our crew would go out. They, you know, we'd run to Dozer. They would do all the, the site clearing and grading and things like that. And we would just be hiring, hiring a company to come in and lay ass, like a 10-foot asphalt path, essentially. So it's a work in progress and I'm trying to keep you guys up to date as we do it. We can move, we can move on it tonight. We can move on to the next meeting, just depending on what kind of comfort level you guys are at.
Well, I'm very comfortable with it and I'd be happy to add it to the agenda when the time comes.
Okay. These are things that have been on the park plan for some years. It's just when, when do you strike? And, you know, this, this, this new money coming in makes it to where us doing the prep for several things at once will save us money. You know, having to mow in and mow out once, it will save us money. And then us wanting to get that dome in, in mid-May before summer hits, that makes us want to move quickly on it. And to get that in, we want to be able to do the, you know, put in the asphalt, put in the borders and just basically have everything as ready as possible.
That's the only problem that we've ever had with the park is that we've never had money to do anything with.
We got money right now.
Yeah.
Not for roads.
Yeah, I know.
But we got money for this.
Well, we've got two, two repairs coming up this summer, don't we?
We do. We are, we are on the verge of starting the Ritter Street renovation, which is not really even a repair. It's a total, total tear down and rebuild. And then shortly thereafter, there's a portion of road over by the, the post office that's going to get redone.
Yeah, so F-350 gets swallowed by a hole in front of the post office.
It gets a little rough in front of the post office. A lot of people want to see Park Street worked on. Park Street is a big stretch of road. So, you know, it's definitely on our, on our radar. But it's a, you know, the feds always promise these big infrastructure packages and we sit there waiting for the, the money to rain down for bridges and roads. And then it ends up somewhere else, maybe in Ukraine.
The only 9% out of this infrastructure package actually goes to bridges and roads.
Don't figure.
I did. That's why I know it's 9%.
Okay. I, I think we've covered that. Let's move into reports, if council's okay with that. Chamber of Commerce, is George with us tonight?
Well, George isn't here. I don't see him. But Linda and I gave a report of all the stuff that is going on throughout the city. You know, the courthouse, the whole nine yards, everything. It was actually pretty fun. We kind of tag teamed off each other. And South Thurston Fire, our chief, he came down and gave us an update on where we are with, with the funds and all the stuff that we're supposed to be getting. For example, we've got a new, it's, it's not really new. It's a display model, but it only had something like 2,000 miles on it. So we got the discount on a, on relatively a brand-new aid unit and some other things that are coming. One thing that we've been able to pencil, hey, George, one thing that we've been able to pencil out instead of, I think it was 37 cents per thousand, it's only going to be 34 cents per thousand. So we're, we're doing everything that we can to pinch every penny that, that we can out of all of that. And you can also kind of count that part as the fire department report.
Yeah, yeah, two birds with one stone.
You betcha.
George, anything else regarding the chamber?
Yeah, we have an awesome speaker in April. On April 20th, it's going to be the State of the City address by Mayor Wayne Poinier.
On 4/20.
4/20, yeah, at 4/20, but yeah.
What a day.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, George. EDC?
We have a board meeting tomorrow.
VCB, I see no representative. Fire District 12, was there anything else, John?
No, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Is Linda from the library present? I do not see her. Museum, Jessica was with us last time, I believe. Tenino Community Service Center, the one and only, Jody.
Hello. So we have had to move the vaccine clinics and the VFW, the front part of their hall, has graciously allowed us to be there. So we're going to start setting up the COVID vaccines there for both the kids and the adults, starting in April. Starting in April, it's April 4th, I believe. We're going to start doing the COVID testing in the parking lot of the food bank on Mondays. So they're just moving from the quarry house over to the food bank. This Saturday, the 26th, come join us for bingo. It's one of our fundraisers that we are trying to get put together and that kind of thing. So cards are two bucks each or three for five and come win a kind of cool prize.
I'll be there, Jody.
Thank you, Linda, for your support. I appreciate it.
Jody, do you need, do you need some signs made up for that COVID stuff? So that, you know, street signs?
No, we, the emergency management people have that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're just hosting. We're hands-off, other than hosting.
I asked because.
Also on Saturday, you're having the memorial ride?
Yes, we are. We are still having that as well. So they're starting at the Old 99 Grill this year. And they're going to go for a scenic ride. And then they wind up for lunch at Joe's Place. And then we go out to Rochester, to one of the clubhouses there for a while. And then we'll be back into Tenino at the Eagles.
Cool.
And then we're going to do bingo. So we're hoping to, to kind of move bingo into the end run to bring the whole community together. And so let's see how this is going to go.
Cool. When does the ride start?
Uh, kickstands up at noon.
Okay, thank you.
All right, George, the Arch Commission.
Well, now that you have Jessica on board, I think we can go ahead and move forward between her and me, put the Arch Commission, get it going and have a meeting in April.
And I think her first official day of starting work is tomorrow. We'll get her up, get her an email address set up. Her main office will be in the museum, but she'll also have a workspace at City Hall that we all kind of share. Civil Service, no reports. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee.
I finally put together a meeting, was able to. We're going to have a meeting next Tuesday, the 29th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers.
Awesome. Finance Committee, last meeting, I asked for two members to volunteer. We had two volunteers. And so our finance committee will consist of Councilmember Godivac and Councilmember Plam. We support that with our city clerk. We don't have a permanent city clerk right now, so we will have a staff member filling in. And we will start our finance committee meetings. Planning Commission. Public Safety Chief of Police, he didn't have much to report on tonight, so you will see him at the next City Council meeting. Things are going well for Drew and the academy. Sam spent her last day in our ranks, Officer Garcia, and she has now gone to Yelm. So we have another individual that is being sworn in tomorrow that will be filling in that vacant spot. And I look forward to introducing you to that candidate if we finalize the process tomorrow. Director of Public Works.
Well, good evening. So if anyone hasn't noticed, the parking lot got painted striped and, and so forth. And we've been putting up our curb stops. I think tomorrow we'll have time to finish that up and so maybe take down the orange fencing and hopefully no one else drives in the swells. We got a crew coming in tomorrow to clean our water reservoirs. That will probably take the whole day tomorrow and they'll do pictures for us and they'll fly their drone above them to give all the pictures for their events and so forth. So I have that on file so I can report that to Department of Health. I was talking to Mike Marshall today about the quarry house. When would that be, you know, getting started? He's waiting on the insurance papers and bond papers from the company who won the bid. So he's thinking first part of April, the quarry house will be getting started on, which will be nice. The pool, I think we're still waiting on a Department of Health permit. So, and I'm not sure exactly when that's going to be. We're hoping soon. Because we're, we're kind of running out a little bit of time, but there's some things that maybe the contractor can do, but he's kind of a little worried about if he does come in and do something that might prolong the permit. So that's where that's at. Sounds like tomorrow we'll be filling some potholes. But other than that, that's, we're just been doing regular old stuff and staying busy. Anybody got any questions for me, anything?
No, just to let you know that everybody at the Chamber of Commerce meeting was very happy about the work being done on the parking lot.
Great. Yeah, it looks really good. It seems to flow really well. And I think there was some concern about maybe the stalls being too close together. But they, we've actually went in there with our work trucks and got in there. There's plenty of room. So, yeah, it, it actually looks really good and it goes really well with the, with the whole parking lot theme. So, yeah, that's good.
Good job.
Food Bank Band fits, dressed great.
I'm sorry, was that towards me?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Food Bank Band fits great. City Planner, no report. Code Enforcement Building Inspector, he was at our last meeting. He'll be at the next one. No report from the City Attorney. I think that leaves me. Meetings, 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 working on this park stuff, trying to get things ready for summer. Meeting with department heads, of course. You know, Troy and I have made several walkthroughs of the area that we're, we're getting ready to, to tear up and prep. There's a lot of stuff going on. City Hall is pretty much done. There's probably like 4% left to do. We've got some loose ends to tie up with the contractor that, that I'm, yeah, I'll fill you guys in on at some point, but we're trying to finish that up. And really just kind of chomping at the bit to get a lot of things going. If, if you caught the newspaper today, there was an article that went out about septic receiving and our wastewater treatment plant and kind of our philosophies here in Tenino. And that relates that we, we, we want to process our own bio solids from start to finish within our borders. I think that's a, that's a noble endeavor. There's, there's some other communities that just basically are kind of taking the position, haul it out and do something else with it. We're looking, we're really trying to look at it scientifically and to make sure that we take care of our own business. And I think that there, you know, we've gotten, just based on that article that came out today, there's been some like actual, like sewer industry magazines that reached out and want to do some stuff on what we're doing here and highlight our, our philosophy and how to deal with bio solids. So that's, that, that feels good. It's a weird subject to talk about, but it's, it's kind of an important one. So, yeah, it was, when I first became mayor, I would get red in the face, embarrassed, talking about bio solids and wastewater treatment stuff. But now it's just whatever. It is what it is. So that is my report. Jason's not with us for Be That. CIP doesn't exist anymore. Solid-based. Let us come back to that. It is now 7:30. When we get back to reports, we'll start off you, Elaine.
Thanks.
So we'll conclude the work session and I'll see you guys back here in 30 seconds. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 22nd, 2022 Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Lawton, who we're asking the council move to excuse tonight because he is ill. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, everyone. We have an agenda before us, uh, needing approval.
We approve of the agenda with the addition of, uh, Councilmember Lawton's, uh, absentee.
I'm, I'm going to amend the, the, um, agenda to include a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the A R P funds, uh, to prep for the new playground.
Okay, so we have two different motions on the floor. Neither have a second yet. Uh, we can second O'Callahan's motion and then you can amend his motion to attack to, uh, include that. Or we can have no seconds. We can scrap both those and we can do a single amendment that adds both those things. If you would like.
I second, God. I second John.
Okay.
And I second.
Second to John O'Callahan's motion to, uh, accept the agenda and add Lawton's excusal under consent calendar. Uh, after that, we had an amendment to Councilmember O'Callahan's motion to add the authorization of expenditure of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds for, uh, park site prep. Do we have a second to Linda's motion? John has seconds to motion. Okay, now we will open up. What's that?
We have to work backwards from Linda's and then the full agenda.
So now, uh, we will open up the floor for debate of Linda's motion to add the expenditure of to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds for site prep at the park. Is there any discussion? Is, this is not to approve it, this is just to add it to the agenda. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, so under Old Business Six, ARPA Funds.
No, 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 we gotta approve the agenda now.
Okay.
There's two separate motions.
Okay, that was added to your motion. So now, okay, now we have a motion, thank you, John, we have a motion before us that would approve the agenda with the addition of Councilmember Lawton's excusal and the addition of the ARPA funds to Old Business. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, John, for keeping me honest.
You're welcome.
That brings us to, uh, it's a tough job, isn't it? That brings us to approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of three eight twenty-twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next is the consent calendar consisting of March ninth, twenty-twenty-two through March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Payroll E F Ts in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents. Claim checks number three zero four seven four through three zero four nine eight and E F Ts in the amount of ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven cents. For a grand total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, liquor cannabis license renewal for Market Fresh and excusal of Councilmember Lawton for his illness tonight.
Approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes. Uh, that brings us to executive session, none, presentations, none. Public comments, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your time to do so. Please provide your name and address. Going once, going twice, moving on, proclamations. Old Business. Old Business Item Five, End of Emergency Fiscal Policy. So two years ago, the City Council enacted emergency measures at the outset of the pandemic that, uh, freed up some of the uh, typical kind of restraints and spending and things like that, that the mayor has upon them. Uh, in case of emergencies, we, we, you know, we did use some of these uh, procedures. It was a good move for the council. I believe it did allow us to be a little more nimble during a, a state of, during an actual emergency. Um, and we were able to get help to a lot of people, uh, much quicker because of this. But, uh, things have improved, we believe. Uh, the ending of the mask policy was, uh, a few weeks ago, we were opening our buildings back up to the public, April first. And so we wanted to put it back before the council, uh, to see if it would be the timing was right to end the official emergency declaration and go back to, uh, procedures as normal.
Approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to end the official emergency declaration from March sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Is there any discussion?
Yay.
I want to thank the council for entrusting, uh, the administration in, uh, in, 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 enacting these emergency policies. Uh, I know that it, it kind of, it, it really does require a lot of trust. And I don't think we did anything, uh, that was not prudent, but I do appreciate their patience and, and their, and their trust. So if there's no further discussion, we will just take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Emergency. Next. Uh, Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero four. This is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Tenino correcting a clerical error, error in ordinance number nine one nine. Nine one nine is the ordinance that we, uh, passed to set the home fund. Uh, when we sent this off Department of Revenue, there were some clerical errors and there was a sentence, uh, that the Department of Revenue wanted struck. We worked with the City Attorney and I believe we ended up just removing a single word. So this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Tenino correcting clerical error on ordinance nine one nine. Ordinance nine oh nine opposing additional local sales and use tax of one tenth to one percent for housing and related services and providing other matters relating there to and property permitted uh, as authorized by our C W eight two, uh, dot one four dot five three, adding a new section to the municipal code. Whereas a clerical error was made, section three effective date, and go down a little bit more, please. Um, this ordinance and the sales and use tax post hearing shall be automatically repealed. The Thirteenth County does. And you see where we struck not. It is changed to does enact the countywide one tenth to one percent housing and related services tax. This would be adopted by the City Council of Tenino and approved by the mayor. It's regularly scheduled open public meeting this twenty-second day of March twenty-second.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. It has been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, clerical error in the resolution of correcting the clerical error in ordinance nine one nine. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just noticed that, uh, there's a severability clause in there. Uh, what's wrong with it? Usually when there's a severability clause, it's either somebody got lazy and didn't want to, didn't want to put something in there or there's actually something else wrong with it. What a severability clause means is that if I look at this law and it's, it does not pertain to me, I can challenge it. If I win in court, the law no longer pertains to me. Usually that happens because there's something wrong with the law.
Where, where are you seeing this?
Uh, come up to, go up on page.
First paragraph.
No, 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 we're, uh, on the whereas, the last, the last line for severability and establishing effective date.
This section of the city.
Last line of the whereas, the first whereas. I have a problem with severability clauses.
Um, this is just, this is the language that the attorney recommended in the whereas is. And this is simply a resolution where the council is recognizing that the ordinance is fine, but there was a clerical error in adding the word not. So this is not an ordinance, this is a resolution. That resolution is just memorializing that the council all understands that the word not does not belong in there.
Oh, I, I understand that. The problem that I have, even though it's just a resolution, it can still be challenged. And when you have, when you have a severability clause in anything, that means it's, 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 so there's something wrong someplace. Uh, you know, if it's already been, uh, first and seconded, I don't like the, the tax on this. I'm not gonna go through another speech. I've already given four different ones. Uh, but like I said, severability, I've seen it in action before and I do not like a severability clause.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not sure who voted.
Rachel.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. So we have one yea, is that correct? It's kind of hard to do this on here. Okay. I see a green light. Linda, did you vote? Are we having some technical difficulties? All right, let's.
To, oh, before we move off of this, uh, real quick, I do not want my lack of a vote to be taken as, as an affirmative. Because that's the state of Washington, if you do not voice, uh, it's, it's a vote of affirmation and I wish that not to be.
Okay, understood. Linda, are you voting?
I can finally hear you guys. All of a sudden I was hearing nothing. Okay, yes, I am.
Are you a yea or a nay?
I'm a yea, yes.
Okay, so we have two yays. Elaine, are you a yea or a nay?
Nay.
Okay, John, are you a yea or a nay or abstain?
Uh, uh, as I've said before, I'm, I'm gonna, we'll just go with nay.
Okay, so we have a tie vote.
I just don't like this in, in its entirety.
Okay, uh, I will break the tie and I will vote in the affirmative. So motion passes, thank you.
I'm just thinking with the attorney's, um, suggestion and his wording in there is what makes me feel comfortable about it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to item number seven, Old Business, uh, ARPA Funds. So we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand left over from the twenty-twenty-one ARPA Funds. And we have two hundred and sixty thousand yet to be dedicated from the twenty-twenty-two ARPA Funds. Uh, this is one of a few things that we will be suggesting. Uh, we talked about this in length during the, during the work session. Uh, this is a, uh, this is an opportunity kind of thing. And these are long planned improvements that we are now striking on and, uh, we are asking that the council authorize the use of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA funds from the capital budget. Uh, to do phase one, phase two site prep for the park playground project. That's a lot of Ps.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to authorize the administration the use of those funds. Is there any discussion? John, you made the motion. Do you have any, would you like to open up any discussion?
No, it's, this is, like, I'm old enough to say that I've been looking at this for decades. And it's about time we finally get some of the money that we give this, the federal government every year and year in and year out, that we finally got some of it back to do something good with.
That's a good way to look at it. Okay, hearing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I think I heard. Let's do that again. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I heard Rachel, Linda, John, Elaine, we, did you vote or are you abstaining?
No, I voted yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, vote, it passes. Uh, all in favor, thank you. That brings us to New Business Resolutions, ordinances. All right, we'll finish with reports. Uh, Solid Waste Advisory Board.
The next meeting is not until April thirteenth.
Excellent, steady.
We had a good steady meeting on, on, uh, this last Friday. We had thirty-four people in attendance, which is a record for steady. It was at the, the Skali Indian Tribe New Health and Wellness Center. And both Councilmember O'Callahan and Godovac were there, so maybe they want to give an update on their thoughts on how the meeting went.
I thought it was a great meeting. I learned an awful lot, but I, some things I didn't understand or didn't know before, so I thought it was a great meeting.
Now, one of the things that I, that I liked, because I've been harping on it since I first heard that we were, that, uh, as a state, we were looking at putting together, uh, broadband, uh, funds, uh, not so much the amount, which is a giant chunk of change that's gonna be allocated to the tribe, uh, through state and federal. Uh, but it's actually going to start being used at where it's needed instead of starting in Olympia and then branching out from there. Uh, for example, Rainier, uh, not Rainier, but, uh, Bukota for years has not really had any kind of cable service or, or any real broadband, because it's such a small community, nobody wanted to actually bring anything out except for DirecTV and Dish Network, because, and those are just one-offs. This is actually going to benefit South County greatly. Uh, so I, I thought it was a very good. And just to see, from when I first moved here, uh, decades ago, I love saying that. Uh, from what it, what, what the, the reservation was to what it is now is just amazing. Uh, you should go, you should go out there and visit sometime. I mean, just, it, it, the words don't really do it justice, how much they've actually been able to accomplish out there. It just looks great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
There we also have Washington State Department of Commerce there to give an update on all the money that's coming out of their programs as well.
TCOM, no report. Tenino School Board, Rachel.
Well, this morning, the middle schoolers, the sixth and seventh grade, um, headed to SISBUS early this morning. Um, seventh grade gets to go this year because last year with COVID, they, um, weren't able to go, so I'm happy they get to be included this time, which is good for the eighth graders, because they have the whole school to themselves now for the rest of the week. Um, so next week is, uh, conference week and the district is doing something different. They're gonna send a feedback survey out to parents and guardians, but also to the students. Um, I'm not quite sure the age range of which they're sending it. Obviously, I doubt they're sending a survey to Parkside, but, um, you know, they're gonna ask for feedback. I'm not quite sure what's all in the survey, um. But, you know, that's, that's always good to include the kids on, um, what they're thinking, what they're feeling, how they're liking it. Um, on to, uh, the elementary school, uh, with spring coming up, or is it spring, right? Are we in spring?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, spring happened already. Spring has, okay, so the elementary school is hosting their after-school clubs. And so they have the garden club, which, um, has been really good. And they're also doing an agriculture and agriculture and science club, which is kind of exciting, and then a knitting club.
Doing that and she loves it.
That, she's doing the ag one?
Yeah, the ag science one. She, she learned how to make butter.
I love that. I really hope it continues because, um, I'll have a third grader next year, so that, that would be really cool. Um, also with spring, spring sports are underway. So if you go on to the high school website, under the athletics calendar tab, you'll see, um, the upcoming games, who's playing what, um, you'll see the upcoming games, who's playing what, the scores of the games. All of that is updated constantly. And so if you want to like, kind of keep track of how the baseball's going and, you know, tennis, whatever, you know, you can go on there and look. And so the last thing I have is the levy. So since the levy has passed, discussions are starting on the improvements and updates and repairs that are, that are going to be done. Nothing, nothing in stone yet as far as like where they're starting, but I'll keep you guys in the loop as things start happening. But soon, and it's all really exciting stuff.
Awesome.
And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. TRPC?
TRPC and TPB, I sent everybody the after meeting reports.
Okay. TPV Legislature, Linda.
No legislature.
For another year. All right, that brings us to public comment period number two. There's any people in the public that would like to provide comment? Now is your time to do so. Please state your name and address. George, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, so George Sharp. And we had a great article in the Squali Valley News and the Chronicle about the Creve District. I just put the link in there if anybody wants to see what it was if you haven't seen it yet. So, and thanks for queuing that up there.
Yep, you did a great job. Thank you for representing us so well. Any other public comments?
I just did my PDC reports. If you haven't done them yet, they're due by tax day.
Thank you, sir.
September 10th.
Any further announcements?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that the PTSA is hosting their dinner. I mentioned it before in a previous meeting, but I'm just sending a reminder. It'll be on May 20th at Hillside Farms. And you can purchase your tickets at the Toninno Combined PTSA Facebook page. They have the link on there if you have access to Facebook. I don't know if it's on the district website, but through the PTSA, you can get your tickets on there. And they do go pretty fast. And so, and all the money goes to support the schools and they have a really, they have a lot of nice stuff in their auction so far that I've heard. So you don't want to miss it.
And then on May 21st is the Splash Bash to support the Quarry Pool. And it's going to be at the Kodiak Room. And tickets will be available soon. They should be coming out first part of April. You can purchase them at the Ironworks Boutique. And I, they're going to be online too on the Facebook page.
All right.
How much are they?
$50 and you get a meal. It's going to be a Western theme this year.
All right, any other announcements? Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a wonderful, wonderful evening.
Undebatable motion.
Good night.
Good night.